I'd like to call to order the Little Miami School Board Regular Meeting on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. Roll call, please.
There we go. Mrs. Grace?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Horvath?
She had a conflict.
Mrs. Elmer?
Here.
Mr. Seibert?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
Here.
Thank you.
Our Little Miami Junior ROTC will lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each month, the Board of Education is proud to recognize individuals who exemplify what it means to demonstrate leadership and good character while making a positive impact here at Little Miami. They're perfect examples of what it means to be a Panther. First, we'd like to start with our Panther Character Awards. Mr. Wallace.
Good evening. Uh, we'd like to recognize five deserving students as this month's Panther Character Award winners. This honor is presented to one student from each of our schools. The students are recognized by their teachers and peers for their hard work and good character, and this month's character trait is courage, being brave enough to do what you should do even when you're afraid. I'd like to ask the following students to come forward and line up in front of the, uh, the board facing the audience. Uh, first, Henry McNutt. Edler Marriott. Jasmine Adams. Aubrey Couch. And then Haley Carlson, who unfortunately is not able to be here. She'll get presented, uh, her award later, but currently she's representing the Panthers at a volleyball game this evening. So the first student, I'd like to read a brief note, is about Henry. Henry had some worrisome feelings about coming back to school. However, he is working hard to overcome these worries. He has been successful coming to school and into class in the mornings. I'm so proud of him. He is a hard-working, responsible, and respectful student. I enjoy having him in class. And I will say, uh, Henry, I think no matter how old you get, people always have worries. So the fact that you were able to identify it now and deal with it is outstanding. So, good job, Henry. Next is, uh, Edler Marriott. Edler always shows PACT's leadership when it's difficult to demonstrate it. He will raise his PACT's hand in the noisy hall and remind everyone to remain silent. It takes courage to do that. Edler is the first in my class to raise hand and take part in our reading discussions. He always offers his best in writing and keeps in trying to improve his work. He's a pleasure to work with. And I will say, Edler, I, I give you a, a lot of credit because it's not easy. When everyone's talking, you're the one trying to do the right thing. Sometimes doing the right thing's not always easy, but I'm proud of you for doing that. Next, we have Jasmine Adams. Jasmine is new to our school this year. When Jasmine faces challenges in life, she has learned to try new things even when they are hard. She has tried new math challenges, new reading challenges, and new writing challenges like a champion. In addition, when the very large web at the playground seemed impossible, she got a handshake of encouragement from me and tried again successfully. We can be courageous and try hard things, just like Jasmine. We are proud to have Jasmine as a Panther Cub. And, and I will say, Jasmine, uh, welcome to the district. We need more students like you here. So, thank you. Aubrey Couch. Aubrey's teachers recognize her courage each day. She reaches out to peers that are playing alone and makes sure that everyone is included. Aubrey is so hardworking and has a positive attitude through it all. She's a friend to all peers, helpful to her teachers, and a true leader in the classroom. We're so proud to have Aubrey has a Panther on our team. And, and I will say, Aubrey, you're, you're a, a blessing to have in our district as well. The fact that you're reaching out to some of the kids that aren't, uh, being accepted, that takes a lot of courage. Sometimes it's fun to kind of be with the big group playing, but you see someone by themselves and you kind of put your needs behind and you take care of theirs. So, excellent job, Aubrey. All right, now this is for Haley. I know she's gonna rush home from the match, or the, the game and, and watch the school board meeting. So we'll give her a, a, a big warm round of applause here in a minute. So Haley has shown tremendous growth since her junior year, transforming from a shy and quiet student into a confident leader. She now stands up for her ideas and supports her classmates, creating a positive learning environment. Her leadership has been pivotal to the success of the Panther Show and classroom dynamics. Haley couldn't be here tonight because she's a member of the high school volleyball team, and the team has a match at Lebanon tonight. So, for Haley, I want to say, you know, uh, thanks for everything you do. Uh, thanks for your leadership. Uh, if anyone's ever had a chance to watch the Panther Show, I think you just got on the YouTube and you watch it. It's kind of fun. The kids put it together and it's, it's, uh, neat to watch. So if you have a chance, I, I certainly encourage you to, uh, get on there and, uh, follow that show. So, everyone up front, thank you and congratulations to all of you for being such a great example of showing great character at the school.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. All right, every meeting, uh, we always read the mission statement of our school. The Board believes that it is the responsibility of the school system to ensure that each graduate and is college and career-ready. To these ends, an environment of high expectations shall be created that fosters scholarship and citizenship and develops within each student the ability to become a productive and responsible member of our society. Moving on, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Seibert. Mr. Wallace. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the reading of the minutes.
I'll move.
Second.
And Mr. Wallace. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes. We now have communications and/or visitors to the Board.
Yes, we have some very special guests with us tonight, and Mrs. Grace, our Board President, is going to make introductions.
Tonight, we're honored to recognize September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month by Going Gold. And if you'll notice, some of us have gold ribbons on. Across the nation, gold is a color of strength, courage, and hope for children and families impacted by cancer. Across the nation, this is celebrated. Here in Little Miami, we are especially moved by this cause as eight of our very own students have faced and continue to face challenges of cancer with incredible bravery. This evening, we will hear from families who will share their stories and remind us of the importance of standing together in support. We are proud to shine a light on these courageous students and their families, and we thank them for allowing us to join them in raising this awareness. At this time, I would like to invite Joellen Vogt and Mike Vioxx to the stand.
First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Morgan for her leadership in this, um, gold awareness and also the Board members. I just want to share, um, sort of a narrative of what it's like, um, with childhood cancer. As a parent, you can never truly prepare for the experience of facing a cancer diagnosis with your child. It is an unimaginable reality that no parenting book, warning, or advice could ever prepare you for. One moment your child is engaging in normal activities of childhood, life feels good, then everything changes. They struggle to recover from a simple cold or flu, complain of unfamiliar pain, or develop a relentless high fever that does not improve. Despite these troubling signs, you cling to the hope that it's nothing serious, convincing yourself that your instincts and Google MD searches may be unfounded. However, an unsettling feeling persists promoting you to seek answers through tests, blood work, x-rays, and scans. Then you find yourself waiting to hear those results. As the doctor's voice begins to fade into the background when you hear those life-altering words, your child has cancer. In an instant, everything you believed about life is completely upended. It doesn't matter how or when it occurs. Those words transform your life in a heartbeat. If you have never experienced this moment, those of us who have, hope you never have to. But please listen closely. Right now, another family may be confronting that same reality, hearing those words for the very first time. They are struggling to breathe as the walls seem to close in around him, around them. They silently wish they could change places with their child, desperately hoping to take away the cancer but unable to stop the storm ahead. They break down, yet somehow they find the strength to fight. They become their child's strongest health advocate, absorbing new medical terms overnight, words like chemotherapy, port, scan, gene, gene mutations, lumbar punctures, radiation, and medications that were completely unfamiliar just 12 hours before. Parents diligently memorize chemo schedules and lab counts, often sacrificing their own comfort by sleeping in chairs, holding their children through bouts of sickness, and hoping for miracles. They celebrate even the smallest victories such as a one-tenth increase in blood counts, capturing moments of joy behind hospital masks. They face hair loss in their child, which can feel devastating. These parents frequently find themselves isolated with their child, often separated from other children as one parent manages household responsibilities. The harsh reality is this, is that this narrative is all too common. In the United States, one in 285 kids will be diagnosed with cancer before age 20. Cancer is the number-one cause of death by disease in children. There are 12 types of childhood cancers and 100 subtypes. Forty-two children are diagnosed with cancer each day, amounting to nearly 15,000 families affected annually. The average age of diagnosis is eight years old, yet a mere 4% of federal cancer research funding is allocated to pediatric cancer research, an alarming figure for the youngest among us. In our Little Miami community alone, we have 11 families who have faced the challenges of childhood cancer. Since 2016, we have three new diagnoses among school-aged children, along with one case of relapse. Currently, two students are undergoing treatment, while seven others are in post-treatment or survivorship. These children are not just numbers, though. They are classmates, teammates, neighbors, friends, and cherished members of our community. They are grappling with hair loss, feelings of isolation, and the physical toll of illness, missing out on typical childhood experiences such as birthday parties, school events, games, and time in their classroom. They often find themselves celebrating holidays during treatment, sometimes even in the hospital. All they desire is to return to a sense of normalcy, but uncertainty looms as life continues on around them. Despite the immense challenges they face, these children exhibit remarkable bravery and resilience, often inspiring adults in ways we may struggle to comprehend. What about the parents? They're silently exhausting their PTO or taking unpaid leave to be with their child. They worry about medical bills and high deductibles. The average cost of childhood cancer treatment is $800,000. While they appear strong on the outside for their child, they are quietly struggling on the inside. They transform into warriors, yet they remain human. Every day, they show up regardless of what challenges lie ahead. They shed tears in the parking garage so their child remains unaware. They wear T-shirts with their child's name and celebrate their child's treatment-free milestones. When treatment concludes, many assume that life returns to normal for these kids and these families, and that's far from the truth. They still face ongoing clinic appointments, checkups, lab tests, concerns about side effects, hair regrowth, and managing their child's new normal. These families do not want your pity. They need your voice. Each of us has a role to play in making a difference. Advocate for increased government funding for pediatric research. Support or initiate a fundraiser for a family or research initiatives. Only 50%, uh, 50% of pediatric cancer research is funded by philanthropies supported by private donors. Discuss pediatric can- cancer more openly. Pediatric cancer is not the same as adult cancers. A lot of times when these kids are diagnosed, that's what we, we all try to relate them to. They're growing. Um, they need unique therapies. You can donate blood. It's really important. A lot of kids, especially with blood cancer, they get a lot of blood transfusions. Assist a family by treating them to dinner or providing a gas card. Honor a fighter in their battle. Plan gold events and share their inspiring stories. Show up for them during difficult times. Celebrate a survivor and encourage them to share their story. Extend love to a grieving family. What else can you do? Raise even more awareness in schools. What these kids face affects their teachers, and there's a lot of teachers here tonight. And I, a, a lot of them have said to me that they've had several of these kids, and I know it affects them too. It affects school staff, their coaches, and their classmates. Hold a gold day or fun event encouraging community involvement. There's no greater way to bring a community together because people want to help kids facing cancer, and their batter, battles inspire courage and hope. Plan and attend community events because no family should walk this road alone. To the parents in the trenches right now, I see you. You're amazing beyond belief. Even when your world is falling apart, you are not alone. You are carrying what feels like the weight of the world, and you still keep showing up every day for your child. You are enough, and you are a great parent. Keep fighting every day. You face every scan day with the same bravery as your child. You celebrate every clear result. You carry every step back, no matter how heavy, and you keep going. You appreciate every moment differently than before cancer. You understand joy in a way few people ever will. To the parents survivors, you are not alone. You are not forgotten, and you aren't invisible. I see you. Use your child's battle to give back to others. Your empathy is priceless. Your child is amazing and fought so hard, and you have so much to be proud of. I stand with you. I watch your kids grow and give back and become amazing members of their community. To the parents grieving, we are here for you. You are not forgotten, and we walk the heartbreak with you. This journey will change you. It will break your heart and then rebuild it in ways you never imagined. To everyone else listening today, let this be the moment you choose to care a little bit more, to educate yourself a little more. Let this be the moment you choose to act. Help plan a gold event, encourage, or encourage someone else to use their voice for our youngest cancer fighters and their families. Because awareness like this is great, but it isn't enough. Action is how we save lives, and through that action, we provide hope to those facing childhood cancer. And true strength arises from hope. Together, we can make a difference. Thank you. Um, and before I hand it over to Mike, I was just asking, I would just would like the gold families that are here to please stand for a moment. I know they don't, they don't like attention, but they deserve it, and I was just hoping we could give them a, a hand. Thank you. Um, lastly, if Laney, Delaney, could just, everybody else could sit down, and Delaney could stand for a minute. Laney is one of our active treatment children right now. Um, super sweet, so brave, and I'm so happy to see her smile here tonight. Our other active treatment child is, is Hannah. She needs some extra prayers and love, um, and encouragement right now. Uh, she's fighting a hard fight, and just like Delaney, they inspire us every day. Um, I just thank you for your time, and thank you, Mrs. Morgan and the Board. And this is Mike, Andrew's dad.
Thank you. I'd like to thank, uh, Mrs. Morgan and the Board for allowing us to do this. I know we started doing it last year, and hopefully it gains traction year after year. Because like Joellen said, these kids go through unspeakable things. All the poking and prodding, blood transfusions, every, all the treatments. It's, it's not fun. Being a parent that's been there, it, it's the worst thing. We were taken under Joellen's wing when Andrew was diagnosed, and she's become family. She's helped us through it. She's now helping all the other families that have gone through it or are going through it. And I think, Joellen, we should give her a round of applause for her help. One organization locally here that focuses on pediatric cancer, and all their funding goes directly to pediatric cancer research, is Cancer Free Kids, and their website's cancerfreekids.org. Uh, they've done a lot of things. They, they're most notably for the Butterfly Walk every spring, one of their bigger fundraisers. Uh, right now, this month, they do the 100 Mile Challenge. Uh, Friday night, they have their celebration of courage, where one, the families and their kids get to go and have a nice dinner, music. They have silent auctions to raise money. Uh, I, I implore you to try to donate if you can, because all this money, like Joellen said, i- it's very scarce for pediatrics, and we need it all, to help these kids get less harsh medicines, less effect, you know, more effective medicines that don't hurt them as much. Uh, this year, Andrew got the privilege of designing the Cancer Free Kids Butterfly Walk T-shirt. We, we've gotten to do a lot of fun activities now that he is in remission and done with treatment. But we gotta, we got, can't forget the kids that are in treatment and missing school, not being with friends. When Andrew was in the hospital, he received a ton of cards from numerous grade levels, teachers, students from Little Miami. I never would have expected that from such a big school district. I came from a small school district. I went to private schools, small schools. You would expect stuff like that. But from Little Miami, the outpour of support was amazing, and Andrew would, his face would always light up when he got one of those big manila envelopes full of cards and read them all. I mean, we, we've saved them all, and it means a whole lot, not only to us, but the kids that are fighting. I really appreciate your time, and hopefully this informs you of what really goes on with these kids. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I think you parents are very brave. And if this has touched any of your hearts, please contact Joellen and see what you can do to help. Uh, I know I'm going to, so, uh, I appreciate all that you have done and, um, it just, that's something you never want your child to go through, so, thank you. All right. We'd like to congratulate all our Panther Character Award winners, and a sp- a special thank you to the Going Gold families and all of our childhood cancer warriors for sharing your stories with us. Your courage, strength, and voices inspire our community and remind us of the importance of standing together for this fight. We are honored to celebrate your incredible impact. We would all like for all of you, uh, the award winners and the Going Gold families, to head to the lobby for pictures, please. Thank you. All right, going on with Superintendent Comments.
Thank you. I would like to begin tonight by thanking ICRC TV for broadcasting our board meeting tonight. Um, it can be seen on our YouTube channel, as well as the ICRC YouTube channel on Spectrum and on FiOptics. ICRC also broadcasts our, uh, football game on Friday. They're, uh, broadcasting our soccer game on Thursday, and we just are super, um, excited about the partnership with them. Um, secondly, I would like to do just a little bit of an update from our town hall. Um, if you remember, we had our first town hall on September 9th, and, uh, we felt like it was a great success. We had nearly five, uh, I'm sorry, 550, uh, 50 people attend, including parents, staff, students, and community members. Uh, we felt encouraged by the wide mix of voices and perspectives that came to the table. The format, when people come in, they're, um, sat in a small group, and they get to work through discussion cards. There's a facilitator and a note taker at each table. Um, and, um, and we covered lots of, of topics like growth in facilities, district finances, transportation, communication, curriculum, safety, technology, staffing, retention, and extracurriculars. So there were a lot of topics touched. Um, uh, we felt like it was open and honest conversation, and we feel like people walked away feeling like they were heard. Uh, one of the most encouraging things about the evening was just the positiveness that people brought with them. Uh, they shared concerns as well, um, but they also came with thoughtful ideas and a clear desire to be part of the solution with Little Miami. Um, as you'll see, I, I gave you a draft summary from the evening. Uh, this draft summary is also already posted on our website. Um, and we're collecting all of the feedback from the notes that we, um, receive from the meetings, and we're analyzing them and putting them into a summary. And so each meeting, you will have a, a new summary out on our website for people to, to listen or to, uh, to read. Uh, the goal is not just to listen, it's to capture those insights so that those, uh, those insights are, um, internalized and used through our future planning. The website, uh, that you can find the, um, the summary on is littlemiamyschools.com, and then there's a banner across- of the transportation department. The majority of our drivers are actually still on routes delivering our children at home, our, our younger children, while athletics needs to leave for their field trip. We have some drivers that really don't have a desire to drive athletic field trips and we have some drivers that might sign up and end up being sick or can't come to work for whatever reason. Something else that is frustrating to our parents is this is part of their pay to play. So it doesn't cover the full transportation cost by any means, but part of that pay to participate fee goes to transportation. Something that we're looking at internally is representing a dollar amount for each trip and looking at reimbursing our parents that dollar amount for any trips that are canceled. I don't think that that'll solve the frustration by any means, but I just, I feel like that's the right thing to do. We also tried meeting with our OPSI representative and our OPSI president, along with Mr. Gonda, Mr. Conkel, Mr. Dieter's our board attorney and myself. And we put together an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, to try to help out with this situation. And the memorandum of understanding would permit the district to bring in a third party to help with unfilled routes. But those, those unfilled routes, it all comes with criteria. I did give you a copy of the memorandum of understanding earlier, so you have a copy of that. But just to kind of go through it, the memorandum of understanding does indicate that the party will use their own bus or van when possible, so they wouldn't use our, our vehicles. Little Miami employees will always have the first right to sign up for all trips. Only unfilled trips are assigned to the third party. Trips will be posted and awarded 14 days before the trip to allow time for both Little Miami to award the trip and then a third party to also award that trip. If a trip is modified 36 hours or less from the trip, then all call will be made for an emergency trip to Little Miami drivers. That also, then, then if nobody can pick it up, then again, it would go to the third party. If a trip is modified greater than 36 hours from the trip, the trip will be posted for four hours for a Little Miami employee to be able to take the trip. Drivers who have routes that conflict, so those drivers who drive our younger children, in our collective bargaining agreement, it currently states that they can bid on field trips twice through the year and somebody else will have to pick up their route so that they can drive a field trip as well. We increased that to four times through the year so that possibly we could get more help through that method. We, we put together an ad hoc committee to explore more permanent, long range solutions. This committee has already met and is, is making good, good progress with discussion. The MOU agreement was through 30, May 31st of 2026, so it's just this school year. We also indicated that during the duration of the CBA, the collective bargaining agreement, that we would not look at a third party for transportation in general. After the creation of the, of the MOU, the union president asked if we could add language that would indicate that the third party could drop athletes off and Little Miami could pick those athletes up. We indicated that we would be fine with that as long as it, it wasn't adding cost to Little Miami, to, to the bills that we would already be, be paying. The district will continue to advertise field trips to drivers. For example, we're advertising to parents, if they have an athlete, they could be paid to, to, to see that athlete play. So they could get their CDL and drive their athlete and their teammates to the event, get into the event free and then drive them back and pick them right up at the school. It sounds like a win-win, right? So we're advertising those types of things, trying to get people to drive. Driving, there's a driver shortage, not just at Little Miami, it is, it is across the, the As a district, we do have a few coaches who are van certified. So if we have smaller teams, sometimes that coach will get van certified so that they can drive their, their own team. That's only again, if the drivers have not picked that, that job up. So the drivers always get first rates to trips. Unfortunately, this MOU did not pass and so we are back to working on new solutions. Questions on that?
So we are not voting on the MOU, is that correct?
The MOU was voted on and it did not pass.
And it was, I guess I do have a couple of questions. When did the first cancellation of the athletic events happen?
The first week of school.
First week of school and it's the end of September and the board asked for an update and we're getting it now, which is good. But the frustration is that I think we need as a board to get together and figure this out. I, I think we're just going to keep kicking, kicking the can down the road. I certainly sympathize with a lot of the, the parents with the athletics. I think this is a fix that could easily be done. So the first question is what is different this year than last year with the, the bus procedures? Why do we have such a high number this year as opposed to last year?
Well, it, it could be multiple things. We are a growing district, so we have more students on our teams, which require more buses to be driven. We have a couple of positions that are still unfilled due to the transportation shortages. So where we have standby drivers, which are sort of like substitute teachers a little bit, except they drive every day. They are, they are busy filling routes and so they don't always, we don't have that flexibility to put them on an early trip. The trips that are the most difficult to, to fill are those trips that leave early. So we might have a tennis match that begins at four o'clock. Well, they might need to leave at three o'clock or 2:30, depending on where that match is. Well, most of our drivers are driving during that time, which makes it difficult.
Well, I imagine that was the same as it was last year.
Last year, we did not have those unfilled routes.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. I'm trying to figure out what, what's the difference between last year and this year? How many more bus routes did we pick up this year?
Well, evidently we have less drivers.
Well, hold on a second.
How many new routes, Chad, do you remember?
We had 60 additional stops.
Bus stops or buses, bus routes? Just 16 bus stops?
To accommodate the students being on the bus for 60 minutes.
So six.
Multiple layers in the business.
Yeah, so 16 bus stops have canceled.
How many new routes did we add though?
Have canceled, how many, 20 cancellations because of 16 bus stops? And what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, it's extremely frustrating for the community. I've spoken, I have spoken to numerous athletic boosters, I've spoken to numerous bus drivers and I've spoken to numerous parents in the district. So I think we say there's a shortage of bus drivers. Yes, there is, but let's not, let's not pretend that's the problem. I say that because we have, what, 57 regular routes, right? And we, we have bus drivers for those 57. Of those 57, or excuse me, and then we have five van drivers for those routes, four special needs routes and two private school routes, which gives us a total of 64 bus drivers. So I think one of the issues is this year, we implemented not being able to have the bus drivers split, split their routes. And by splitting the routes, that has caused 20 cancellations and it is the 23rd of September and we still don't have a problem that we knew from the first week of school. So my, my thing would be, why are we limiting ourselves to only four opportunities for splitting the routes? The other thing I would say after speaking with numerous people is what are we doing to hire? Putting a hiring sign on a bus at 48, or I guess at this building here, I, we want to compare ourselves to other districts. I tell you what, I think Forest Hills has the right idea where they invite the community members to ride along. Say, hey, if you're interested in riding a bus, why don't you hop on and go on one of the routes with us? See if you like it or not. I, I think also we got to look at the, the programs we have for our routes, looking at modifying our routes. Just because we did it last year doesn't mean we have to keep doing the same thing. Look at any systems we have to upgrade it. One of the things I, I noticed from the community, the executive summary, is we talk about transportation. Bus drivers are praised, but overcrowding long routes and activity coverage are ongoing frustrations. And I don't blame them. I mean, I've, I've gone places with two kids and it drives me nuts. I couldn't imagine putting 60 of the kids on there after school. So I think we need to look at what can we do for our bus drivers? Now, I've heard, and if you could, Chad, look into it, but I heard we had 10 people, over 10 people applying for bus driver positions and for whatever reason, they were never followed up, which has led to them getting jobs at neighboring districts. So I think we need to look at those items. The next thing is, as we're kicking the can down the road, trying to figure out how to solve this problem, my recommendation is why can't we just get a fleet of passenger vans? I don't know if we need 12 or 14, whatever we can do maybe underneath the CDL limit, so you need a special license for the bigger vans, but maybe getting something smaller so we can just start getting these kids there. I can't imagine, you're not going to move a football team, but certainly a golf team or a cross country team can certainly move in two vans, but I'd get on that right now until we figure out what the issue is. We got to just nudge down to that, that details. And it goes back to our bus drivers. I tell you what, I, I think they need to probably have more of a, a, a speaking part as far as how to fix this problem. It was amazing when I sat down and talked to a few of them, just the ideas they had made sense. I mean, you got to, I'll get back to that. But then the other thing too, is you talk about the bus drivers. So let's, let's look, we talk about 60 kids packed on the bus. Last year, we had a knife on the bus. This year, we've had a BB gun on the bus. What are we doing for the teachers other than looking at bringing in an outside organization? I, I think we owe it to our teachers not to do that. I think we can fix the athletic program, but I think the athletic program has to understand it's not necessarily a matter of bus shortages, it's just the way the management of the, the bus situation is. These teachers, these bus drivers want to participate, or some of these bus drivers want to participate with taking field trips, but as you said, Mrs. Morgan, they're not getting done with their routes until almost five o'clock. Have we reached out to Matt Lewis to see about pushing back some of the athletic events? I know, I know some of them we probably have more control over than others and I think we probably need to circle back on that one as well. So, and then I hear another thing about, well, there's a lot of sick days or teachers, there's a lot of time off for the bus drivers, but these are the rules that we created as the district with their contract. So if we don't like that, we, we can't blame the, the bus drivers for taking the time off that they earned and they deserve. I think, like I said, I think we just need to do a root cause analysis. I'll be more than happy, matter of fact, I would like to be a part of these discussions. So certainly Chad or Mrs. Morgan, let me know when, when they are. I certainly like to be a part of it. And again, I, I think moving forward, I think we can get this solved, but I really want to be clear to the parents of the athletes, I can certainly understand your frustration. It is not the bus driver's fault. The failure lies internally with, with our administration of not getting this answered. So I certainly understand their frustrations and I will tell you, we will work hard to fix it. Thank you.
The next thing that I have is at the special board meeting last week, there was a question raised concerning pictures taken and then students and then published of students that were on a do not publish list. When I indicated that we always check that list to make sure that we did not publish students, Mr. Wallace had a concern that that process was not being followed at the high school pep rallies. I did check up with Dr. Harlemann and asked that question and he stated absolutely that he does check those pictures and, and make sure that, that they are okay to be published. So I just wanted to clear the air on that.
I appreciate that, but I do have a follow-up if I can. So when you were riding on the unicycle and Dr. Harlemann had his camera or video up like this filming you with all the children in the background, he, he validated that every one of those children was like that?
He sure did.
I challenge it. I challenge it. I, I, it breathes well, but there is no way the number of, matter of fact, it'd be great if he could share that. I got, I got one picture, but it'd be great if he could share that video and everyone can see. How many students were scanned in there? There's no way.
The reason there is a way is because there's only one student that was there that day that was in the do not publish and he was not in the gymnasium at that time.
At the pep rally.
He was not at the pep rally, so we are sure of that.
Interesting, because of, we had an issue last month that you were all concerned about people being videotaped at the school, right? And, and you sent out all kinds of stuff, like we had some big breach of security, then when in fact, you knew it was only one student. But you, you let that, you let that lie go.
The day of the pep rally.
Right. And you let, okay, what about the day when I walked around the building?
I don't know.
Exactly. You've let that lie go when you knew in fact, there was only one student.
No, there's more than one. There is more than one student. There was only one student there at the pep rally or could have been there at the pep rally and he was not there, right?
Hold on, Mrs. Grace. So now let me ask you the question. So you said we have more than one student on this list, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. How do we know that the more than one students weren't at the pep rally? You just mentioned there was one student that was in the pep rally. You're now telling me there's more students on this list. How many do we have on this list?
Mrs. Morgan said there was only one person there, the other three were not.
Okay. So we have four people on the do not picture list in the entire high school. And you knew when I walked around, those students were not in those videos.
I, I don't know that.
You watched the video. You watched the video.
But I don't know who the four students are.
Then how do you know they weren't at the pep rally?
Because Dr. Harlemann told them.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not, you know what, we'll move on.
Madam Chair, I have a request for information involving what we're talking about here. To clarify and to show transparency to all members of our governing body, I request a copy of the statement read by one of our members concerning a recent visit to Little Miami High School to be given to any member of this board that would like it, and I would like one.
I will tell you that it's being videotaped, Wayne, and you can have access to what I said, just like everybody in this community. You may watch that video.
Well, I thought you said that you would give us a copy.
Then, then I thought about it. I thought about it then, I was like, you know what, maybe, maybe it'd be good if you watched the meeting again. I changed my mind.
Okay.
Yeah. You can watch the meeting.
That's fine. You're entitled. Anything else?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Community comments on agenda items? Anybody signed up?
Yes. Lynn Radler, please.
Thank you.
A week ago, this board discussed whether board members should have unfettered access to our school buildings at any time. While we continue to consider a policy that balances access along with our safety of students, as Mrs. Morgan rightly pointed out, students can be conditioned to not report unfamiliar adults. I want to raise another important point, the safety of the board members themselves. There are areas in our schools without camera coverage and areas that are not regularly populated during the school day. In these situations, the possibility of a student making an accusation against an adult is very real. My husband and I have been involved in youth sports for 16 years. Through that time, he's completed safe sport training, high level youth hockey coaching certifications and advanced baseball coaching courses. And across all of those programs, one rule remains the same.
I will tell you that it's being videotaped, Wayne, and you can have access to what I said, just like everybody in this community. You may watch that video.
Well, I thought you said that you would give us a copy.
Then, then I thought about it. I thought about it then, I was like, you know what? Maybe, maybe it'd be good if you watched the meeting again. I changed my mind.
Okay.
Yeah. You can watch the meeting.
That's fine. You're entitled. Anything else?
That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, community comments on, uh, agenda items? Anybody signed up?
Yes. Lynn Radler, please.
Thank you.
A week ago, this board discussed whether board members should have unfettered access to our school buildings at any time. While we continue to consider a policy that balances access along with our safety of students, as Mrs. Morgan rightly pointed out, students can be conditioned to not report unfamiliar adults. I want to raise another important point, the safety of the board members themselves. There are areas in our schools without camera coverage and areas that are not regularly populated during the school day. In these situations, the possibility of a student making an accusation against an adult is very real. My husband and I have been involved in youth sports for sixteen years. Through that time, he's completed safe sport training, high-level youth hockey coaching cert- certifications, and advanced baseball coaching courses. And across all of those programs, one rule remains the same: Never, under any circumstances, be alone with a youth. Always ensuring that another adult is present. Even when texting, another adult should be included along with the youth. The same principle should apply here. A guest or a board member in the school should never be alone in areas where children may be present. This is not because anyone has something to hide, but because of the optics and the protection it provides for both the students and the adult. Now, regarding the flag policy discussion from that meeting also, Mr. Wallace raised an important point about enforcement, noting that clear backpack rules are not always followed in high school. While we don't know the reason why the backpacks were there, it highlights a larger challenge. How do we enforce any written policy consistently? As a manager, when I draft a policy for my staff, I start by asking, can this be enforced as written? If not, I revise the policy until it can. For example, if I ban cream-colored shirts, some might argue about tan or gray shirts being creamed to them. Instead, I frame it broadly as attire not deemed suitable for the workplace, so it can be applied consistently. With flags and displays, the same principle applies. If the district adopts an inclusive or exclusive flag and display policy, the very first time it is not enforced, the policy loses credibility. Instead, we should empower building administration to address offensive or disruptive displays directly. That way, a third-grade teacher can still use rainbow name cards on their lockers, while a high school teacher cannot display a pride flag in the classroom, both within the district guidelines. The rainbow has different connotations, potentially based on the age of the audience. If questions arise, administrators can seek direction from Mrs. Morgan or the board. That's what they're there for. She trusts the people. She empowers them to do their job. Let's allow them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela Buck.
Thank you. Um, my name's Angela Buck, and I have been a bus driver for twenty-seven years. Four of those, I'm starting my fourth year, uh, here with the district. Um, I will say that it is one of the bigger districts that I've worked in, and that, um, I appreciate what David Wallace had to say, uh, in defense of our drivers. He is absolutely correct. The drivers are trying everything to do what they can to help these kids get to field trips. We were just, the majority of us were just made aware of this problem less than ten days ago. Um, we had no idea, some even less than that. Um, hearing all this, and I had spoken with my superiors the first year I was here, because I'm, um, acquainted with, um, bus software and many aspects of routes and, um, pre-trips and just bus software in general over the whole thing. So I spoke to my superiors each year that I wanted to help out in the summertime, because I feel like it's a routing issue, that our routes need to be, um, evaluated. However, our staff is, I think, overwhelmed, because all of a sudden, they have so much, so they are trying to juggle it, and there's just no time to make the change. So I wanted to propose to the board, and I did write an email to, um, Ms. Regina Morgan only last night, though, that I would propose lighten the load with a communications person who can evaluate the routes and other issues like student counts, route evaluations, drivers' concerns, staff concerns, field trip evaluations, and come up with, um, analytical data reports so that the change can be made in specific areas. Um, I've seen several areas over my past three years that I've tried to get a little edge in, but hopefully, uh, my voice will be heard tonight. And I, again, I do appreciate, um, everything that you said in defense of our, um, bus drivers, and I think that now that we are aware, um, we're pushing to get those field trips out when we can and, and to do what we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mandy Leibovich.
Hello, my name is Mandy Leibovich, and I live in Village on the Green. When we talk to the bus drivers themselves, they say they are taking routes that end early so they can drive these sports field trips. They sign up for nearly every trip, but are being blocked in some way or another. This has led to coaches and parents being told that drivers don't want these trips, when in reality, our drivers are stepping up every single time. Something doesn't add up here, and parents are left scrambling at the last minute to get their kids to these events. While the district is short on drivers, applications go unanswered. If we truly need drivers, why ignore willing, qualified people? It raises questions for families who are trying to understand what's really going on. I worry that bringing in Peterman or another private company isn't temporary. Once a private company is in, it's rarely short-term. That often means pay cuts, loss of benefits, and losing the dedicated drivers who know our children personally. Not to mention, Peterman and these other coun- companies don't have the best reputations. Our drivers are part of our school family. They know our kids by name, care for them every day, and provide stability that a contract company simply can't match. I do want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Steve, driver of the minibus. Both of my children have had him for their morning trips to school, and the consistency he has provided over the years has been invaluable. We love and trust our bus drivers, and we are asking you to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Courtney McKean. I live in Mobile Valley. Um, I had a whole thing prepared, uh, about the flag policy, but, um, I just want to ask the board, when you're considering this policy, to please consider the effects on students that are different, that are other, that do not communicate the same as most students, that may need images or, um, things, phrases on the wall that allow them to communicate, and they may be, um, what we call gestalt communicators, where they hear things, they hear scripts, or they see movies or shows, and that's how they communicate with others, and they may not be allowed, or, um, their, their bodies, their ability may not be the same as neuro, um, regular students. Our neurodivergent students have a different way of communicating. When you take out those displays, you take out the rainbows, you take out the sports teams, you take out the things that they connect with outside of school that allows them to have that connection with other students, teachers, and other people within their environment, you remove their communication. So it's not just about what's on the wall as a display. It allows communication for those that are different, and we ask, as a community, for you to consider that and not have this flag policy that would remove that communication ability for our students who are different and who are other. And a flag policy like this keeps them from being a part of the world, and it does not give parents the ability to let their kids be out in the world. We'd have to go somewhere else if you do something like that, and that's not what we want. We love our community, we want our community to be inclusive. Please consider that, and please vote no on that policy. It's not inclusive to all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the policy does not impact anything that you mentioned.
It absolutely does, when you remove displays in the classroom.
No, political.
All right.
No, Ms. Grace, he, he, he can be removed. He can be removed. Sir, I would like him removed from the meeting. Interrupting a public meeting, he needs to be removed.
Weren't you interrupting her when she was trying to speak?
He needs to be removed. Sir, he can, needs to be removed. Mrs. Grace, can you please stand up and take control of this meeting and have the individual removed?
Yes, sir, I can. It seems like you do all the talking.
Unfortunately, I have to.
You should be removed. That's the last person? Thank you. Moving on. Chair's reports.
Yes, ask for the board's approval of, under item D, number one, the contracts as presented.
Need a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Seibert, Mr. Wallace, any discussion?
Yeah, let's go through these briefly.
Thank you.
The first one was with Robert Center. Um, this is for our prom. Um, it includes food, beverage. This is an estimated amount. Um, this is for actually two thousand and twenty-seven. Um, you have to schedule them earlier.
Wow.
You won't get the dates. Um, the second one is with Medicare. This is actually for, uh, transportation for a, um, special education student. The next one is with the Warren County ESC, and this is actually for placement of a student at their learning center. Um, the next one is with Stepping Stones, and this is actually adding on to, we already have a contract with Stepping Stones, and this is adding additional services, um, uh, for special education. The next one after that is actually the Air National Guard, and this is actually revenue coming into the district. This is an agreement, um, what they call sponsorship agreement, for essentially advertising at the stadium and, uh, inside the gym and so on, um, for the year. So that is actually revenue of six thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. The, uh, next contract is with the Warren County Educational Service Center. This is also, um, for special education-related services, uh, speech in particular. And then we have, uh, the last three here, we have Maximum Healthcare Services, and this is for Registered Nurses LPN Services. Uh, we have one with KL Staffing, um, and this is only actually for about forty to fifty days. This is, uh, from September to November, and this is for an intervention specialist. And then the last one is with Wasserman Day Treatment, um, ran through by Child Focus, and this is also, uh, a placement for special education services.
Any, uh, questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Thank you. And next, I ask for the board's approval of the, uh, permanent appropriations for fiscal year twenty-six, current school year.
Still moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Wallace and Mrs. Elmer, discussion?
Yes, um, this is actually the, uh, permanent appropriations. It's, it's funny that we call them permanent appropriations, but by law, that's what we call them. Um, with that being said, they can be amended throughout the year, um, and actually, once I adopt my, uh, or once you review my forecast, we'll probably change the general fund. The most funds on here on this list that have the most, you know, of being changed, uh, predictability, I guess, would be the general fund, and then also all of our grants, which are also listed in the five-hundred funds. It's five-oh, well, it starts at five-oh-six and works its way down, um, because as those change from the state throughout the year. But anytime there's a change in appropriations, of course, I will bring them to the board for their approval. Um, appropriations, uh, can't exceed their estimated resources for the year as required by how revised code.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Yes, thank you. I ask for the board's approval for all items under personnel.
Need a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Elmer, Mr. Wallace, any discussion?
Yes, just noticed that we have twelve volunteers on our list today. These individuals have all passed their background checks and will spend time in our buildings, helping in a variety of ways, and we are just so thankful for our volunteers.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I ask for the board's approval for the open enrollment as attached.
Need a motion, please?
Still moved.
I'll second.
Wallace, Mr. Elmer, any discussion, please?
Yes, four of the, uh, of the open enrollment candidates are students of employees who work here. Uh, the final open enrollment student has been an employee, or an employee, a student in the past. His family is building a new home within the district. Um, while they're waiting on that new home to be built, they, uh, they had to move out of their other home, they, they'd already sold it, and so, uh, they are living outside of the district. They'll be moving back in the first of the year when their house is built. So we are preventing him a temporary open enrollment, so he doesn't have to move out of the district for two or three months to move right back in.
Makes sense. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I ask for the board's approval of Resolution two-five-dash-zero-one-five.
Still moved.
Mr. Wallace? Mr. Seibert, discussion?
Yes, this resolution is for payment in lieu of transporta- uh, transportation. Uh, Pilo is used when it's impractical for the district to transport a student to, uh, for various reasons, and it's when the non-public school is within thirty minutes of their, uh, building that they would be attending. The, um, Pilo payment this year is six hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents.
Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next, I ask for the board's approval of Resolution two-five-dash-zero-one-six.
I'll move.
Elmer? I'll second. Discussion?
Yes, this resolution will, uh, if approved, will, um, allow Little Miami to join the Warren County ESC BAC for the purpose of, uh, further workforce development interest in order to build, uh, stronger partnerships between business, labor, and schools. It'll just enhance our student, um, career readiness in accordance with the law. In the past, we've been a member of the Montgomery County ESC BAC. Uh, Warren County has been a sub-member of that committee, but they are starting their own this year, so we're gonna, we're gonna move to Warren County, or we'd like to, anyway.
A little closer to home.
A little closer to home.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
That is all I have, thank you.
Under new business, we have, uh, policy first reads. Also, the Warren County Career Center report.
Are we gonna have discussion about the first read of the policy?
We, we can, yeah.
I mean, because next month will be the second read.
Right, we have any?
We can.
Any comments about the first read?
I, I would prefer that Diane be here, because I appreciate her input, um, but...
We can push it back to the following month, it's fine. Also, Mary, for Diane to be here.
As a first read?
Yeah. Well, this is the first read, we would just not, when we approve all of the other policies in October, we would pull this one out then.
And discuss it then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fine.
We could also discuss it at October sixth, we're having a special meeting. Yeah, we can, I'll, I'll put it back on for there.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
All right, Warren County Career Center report, uh, no report, we're still, we'll meet this, this, after this. Board reports, I don't think we have any.
I have a very, very short one. It's, uh, recognition. I would like to recognize one of our community members for setting up a blood drive and, and doing a great service for all of us. Amanda, would you just please stand up so we can give you a round of applause?
Uh, next board meeting date is October twenty-eighth. And, oh, sorry.
of our community members for setting up a blood drive and, and doing a great service for all of us. Amanda, would you just please stand up so we can give you a round of applause? Thank you.
Good job, Amanda. Next board meeting date is October 28th. And, oh, sorry. Comments, public comments on non-agenda items. Silas, could you take your hat off, please? I just think it's a thing of respect.
Silas Shelton, my daughter's Carly. First of all, I'd like to thank most of everybody that's in here, including the people that she fought in the book fair who've reached out and offered prayers in her situation, February the 19th. I would like to thank David Wallace for reaching out several times during that, checking on the situation. My daughter didn't join ROTC this year because of that situation. You know, Ms. Grace, you reached out a couple of times and asked me what I would have done differently. I'd have done everything differently. Everything. Nothing a school done. What my daughter has gone through over the last few months, she's a different person, completely different person, and I'm telling you that it came from the decisions that you guys made. The decisions that you guys made. You didn't put my daughter first. You didn't take care of my daughter. I've trusted you with her, and she continues to fight and battle these things. And as a dad, I'm completely lost at what to do with it. What would I have done differently? I told you, I'd have suspended these boys immediately and called their parents and had a meeting. That didn't happen. I will say that I appreciate, the phone calls right off the bat, boom, 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 and I thought, wow, that's incredible. And then everything just kind of completely falls apart. So what I look at, I don't see how in the world you guys could ever get a levy passed with this type of leadership, and I declare everybody on the board needs to be replaced, because it's pitiful.
Anyone else?
Hello. First, I want to just, I know that-
Just give your name, please.
Oh, my name is Colleen Sheeter.
Okay.
I just want to, I don't, they've left, but I think most of them have left. But my heart and prayers goes to the families here tonight battling cancer. They carry a weight that, whoo, every parent fears so, so much, and it's unspeakable what they're having to go through, and I applaud their courage for being here tonight. Just being able to stand in front of the microphone without tears is amazing. I want to say that Dave does a great job of speaking in front of this community so that they can hear the thoughts. Not all school boards do that, and even on the school boards that do encourage that, a lot of the people will not. That said, I don't, I don't, Dave, I don't think that a lot of your suggestions for the bus, buses is probably on the right course. I was a bus driver, so I know about how things can be difficult with that. There is a national bus driver shortage. I think Ms. Morgan's idea of really trying to encourage parents and athletic directors and coaches to get their Class B CDLs is right on the money, and if y'all can sponsor that financially, because it's about $250, $300 to take the test, I think that's, I'm shocked that your MOU didn't go through. Like, it, it seemed really reasonable from a bus driver's eyes. And then the last thing I'd like to address, Mrs. Grace, your little passive-aggressive comment to Mr. Wallace about him taking over the meeting, that would not have happened if you hadn't taken control over that outburst immediately.
I agree.
And I continue to see very poor leadership in the board meetings, which I find very disappointing. Today's been pretty calm. There's not been a lot to vote on, but the Robert's Rule stuff has to get reined in, and, and then, real quickly, I just want to say, I saw your public statement that you were not seeking the Warren County Board of, the Warren County Republican Party's endorsement. I was there. I heard ya. Yes, you were. So-
No, I was not.
Let's, let's be honest with the community, because you're going into an election here. So that, people need honesty from ya. That's, people need honesty from you, and they need leadership.
Point of order. We do not-
Hold on a second.
Point of order. We do not allow public attacks in this meeting.
Give her her time back.
Mr. Seibert, you are the next one that I believe needs to be quickly removed from this board, and I am done with that.
I would like to do a rebuttal on that.
Hold on, wha, 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 are we doing rebuttals?
I'll engage with you, sure. If you want to engage, let's engage.
Right.
Most, most school boards don't, so I wasn't expecting.
I was, I was at that committee meeting. I went up and asked for the questions to be endorsed. I had no, I didn't, had no, even wanted to be endorsed by the Republican Party, because first of all, board membership is nonpartisan. Republican Party should not be part of this. Second of all, I wanted the questions. The reason I wanted the questions is so I would know, when I got attacked, what, what they would be asking, so that I could prepare myself.
You showed up to the meeting with Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. Morgan went with you to get that endorsement.
No, Mrs. Morgan did not go with me. I told her where I was. She came on her own.
So my understanding is, once a board member engages with the speaker, then that speaker can have a back and forth, yes?
You may.
Okay. Ma'am, there was no other point of that meeting, other than, and it was literally an endorsement meeting for, to meet the candidates seeking endorsement. There were no votes, there was no discussion on any other party, party business. That was the only purpose of that meeting. So if you only wanted to know what the questions were that would be asked of you in order to seek the endorsement, you absolutely could have gotten that information prior to coming to the meeting.
Madam Chair, point of order.
That's all right.
Her speaking time is up. Everything she says here on is out of order. Am I right?
Let me answer this. I got an invitation from the Republican Party to attend that. I did not know it was for an endorsement. I'm sorry.
Are you, are you, are you good?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Mine has nothing to do about the endorsement, I promise you. My name's Pete Mingle. Address is on file. Good evening, members of the board. I want to bring to your attention a deeply concerning incident involving a PTO member recently. Recently, this individual, who is a political supporter of you, President Grace, as well as David Whiting, privately messaged a mutual friend of mine on Facebook. In that message, she asked this person if she knew me in real life, and then began inquiring for detail, invasive, and alarming information about my children. The recipient of that message was understandably shaken and contacted me immediately. Given the nature of this inquiry and in light of the recent political events, I contacted both the sheriff and the Hamilton Township Police Chief, which took a report. Extra patrols were sent to my residence, and my attorney has advised me if this continued, we will have no choice but to seek a CPO, and this will also possibly involve other parties and other things, including retaining any personal messages or communications regarding me and my family, so that the full nature of this situation can be properly assessed. To be clear, I never had any personal contact with this PTO member. However, I did observe her vocally supporting the current school board president and David Whiting. That makes her behavior towards me and my family even more troubling, because this demonstrates this is political in nature and not personal. I want to emphasize, I have great respect for the parents who volunteer with the PTO. Most serve with integrity and genuine, genuine care for our schools. This concern is not about the PTO as a whole. It is about one individual whose actions were inappropriate, alarming, and unacceptable. This raises two important questions. What kind of background checks are done on PTO volunteers? And what procedures are in place to address misconduct when it occurs? Parents deserve to know that those with access to our schools are thoroughly vetted and held to the highest standard. I think we can all agree that this type of behavior is creeply and reckless at best, and given the current political climate across our country, behavior like this carries the potential for a truly dangerous situation if it's not addressed. It undermines trust, creates fear, and threatens the safe environment we want for our children. And I want to be clear, political opponents, including those who sit on this board and supporters alike, should denounce this divisive and reckless behavior. Silence only normalizes it. Our community deserves leaders who rise above politics and reject intimidation. We need to be able to politely discuss our views and differences without it ever resorting to intimidation or worse. Thank you for your time and for prioritizing the safety of our children and community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I go by Jeremy. But I will say, this is my first board meeting I've ever attended, all right? And I want to introduce myself. I've been in, in this district my whole life. I married my high school sweetheart. We got three children, two of them which graduated from Little Miami, all right? So I want to tell you that I've coached football through the youth organization for over 10 years, all right? I coached not whole baseball for five years. Very dedicated in the community, trying to teach values, integrity, work ethic, and respect to these young kids. And there's nothing that blesses me more to hear a kid saying, hey, coach, you made a difference, all right? So with that, I'm very concerned about things that I've seen on Facebook from this Together We Are Little Mi, for Little Miami. I got on there this morning, and there's individuals, and I don't know who's running that page, but they were endorsing you and Mr. Whiting, that put a post of a person's house and an address saying this is where a person lives. That's totally unacceptable, and that's borderline sadistic, all right? With the, with the political climate that we live in, in this country right now, we're so divisive. That's got to stop. But I want to know if you and Mr. Whiting would, would denounce that kind of behavior that's put on Facebook. Whoever it was took it down, but they took it down only to say Jeremy Cornet wanted this removed. You're right, because that's not, that's unethical. And so I want to know if you guys would go on record to denounce that kind of behavior from Together We Are Little Miami. Thirteen days ago, we saw a guy get assassinated because he had a different opinion, and that's wrong. We don't live in that country, and it's wrong to accept that, but I'm asking for a public, where you denounce it, and Mr. Whiting denounced it, because that's not who we are. I love Little Miami, all right? Everybody in my wedding was from Little Miami, all right? So I got roots in here, and I love it, and I will, for all the coaches that I've coached with, all the students and all the, their parents, I will stand up and fight for Little Miami students, because the things that's been going on is alarming. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Van Mel. I live in the villages of Classic Way. The special meeting that happened last week was very bizarre. I was very bothered to hear so many board members speaking about an issue that had been addressed in executive session in the open meeting. I've been to many board meetings. I have rarely seen that happen, and when it has happened, it has been addressed very quickly and moved on from. I know that there was an issue of policy that intersected with the, the concern being addressed in executive session, but these things either need to be discussed publicly, or they need to be in executive session privately. It cannot be a mix. If, if it is something that is, rises to the level of executive session, again, I, I know it was challenging. I understand it was kind of a unique situation, but I do believe that that information should have either been private or public. The mix of it was, was just bizarre. I was really disappointed that the board took no action when they returned from the executive session. Even something just as symbolic as a censure, I think, would have been absolutely appropriate. I'm very disappointed that it did not happen. Instead, what happened is that there was a two-page statement that was read referencing a situation from executive session. I don't understand what the purpose of the executive session at that meeting was, if so much of the content of that situation was going to be discussed publicly. The other concern that I would like to speak about is that when the flag and display policy was brought back up at the special meeting, only Mrs. Morgan referenced the efforts that the school teachers and the union had put in to giving input on that policy. There are many, many reasons that our school teachers and staff do not speak publicly at these board meetings, but I assure you, it is not because they do not care. It is not because they do not want the policy in this district to give them their best opportunity to be professionals who care about our kids and do their best. For them to go to the length of having a resolution from their union and to present that at the meeting, and then only Mrs. Morgan to respect that point of view and share it and champion it when a discussion was being had, is very disappointing to me. That is a huge part of the stakeholders when we are talking about flags and displays. I understand there may be board members that have concerns about those people's decision-making and whether they're being appropriated into those things, and, and again, we have policies in place for that. I, I, that's separate. But not to even acknowledge that that was their position. I, I really appreciated Mrs. Morgan bringing that up. I think that's a huge part of the perspective that should be looked at in this situation. I really think engaging more stakeholders as a part of this process is important before the policy is approved.
Hi, my name is Mandy Leibovich, and I live in Village on the Green. I watched the September 16th board meeting on YouTube, and like Amanda had said, it was very confusing with the private executive session and then what was said publicly. I do think that board members entering schools without an administrator or superintendent escort makes a lot of people feel uncomfortable. While our schools have nothing to hide, anytime a manager visits an office, it always makes people uncomfortable when they just wander around, and student safety should be our number one priority. Having an escort while they wander the halls of our schools, it protects our students and our staff, which be, should be a top priority for everybody. Second, the proposed flag policy, limiting what can be displayed sends a message to staff and students that creativity is secondary to strict rules. Teachers and staff work hard to make their classrooms welcoming, engaging, and reflective of their students. Restricting decorations could harm morale, reduce student connection, and stifle learning environments, especially in places like the ECC where displays are meant to be highly interactive. There are already policies in place to restrict inappropriate things being displayed. I strongly encourage the board to consult staff and teachers before moving forward with this policy. Our schools thrive when staff feels trusted and empowered, and when students see a space that reflects inclusion, creativity, and care. Policies should support that, not limit it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Judy Lehman. I live in Harlan Township. This is about our property taxes and the school levy. Right now, my husband and I, we have a small business, and we have just started implementing tariffs. I don't know, they've now come in effect, and we print on foil. If you ever heard of Comet Cleanser or Ajax Cleanser, we print that wrapper. So a truckload of foil is now $24,000 more than what it was that we bought last month. So that's going to go on consumer, so everybody, everything's going to go up, because there's a lot of things on foil. So our property taxes also went up this year. We pay almost $9,000 a year. We're in Harlan Township, so I think we pay a little bit more. And you have the audacity to want to put a school levy up before us. I mean, my God, but wait a minute. It's okay to spend other people's money. I know, I work in the county, so I know how that is, too, but it's, you're bleeding people dry. I know there's people in my area that says they don't know if they're going to be able to do it, and we hear property taxes are even, might even go up next year. So I'm going to be a big person, and I am going to do everything I can against this. My husband went to Little Miami, my children went, we loved it, but, you know, some things got to give. I mean, property tag, these, it, people can't do it anymore. We're not Mason, we're not Lebanon, we're not Kings, we're not Loveland. We have no industry here. They all do, and I understand, you realize that, too, but, and plus, the way Silas Shelton's daughter was treated, there is absolutely no way I would ever, ever support this levy this time. Not at all. I worked for Little Miami schools for 20 years. I was a bus driver, and I still love the district. I love the school, but the way his daughter was treated, if anyone asks me about the levy, I will tell them what happened to his daughter. And thank you for your time.
Mike Vioxx, I just want to start off by saying, I watched the meeting last week. All the board members, I don't have a stake in anything. All of you should be ashamed. The way you guys talk to each other, you sit up here- The way you guys talk to each other, you sit up here and give these kids an award on how they act in front of, at the schools and treat each other. I know politics is running rapid now, but come on, you guys gotta be civil with each other. You guys are the ones in charge of our kids. There could be kids watching this. High schoolers, what do they see? You know, my kid battled cancer. He was one of the kids that battled cancer. Those kids go through a lot, and for you guys, and even the community. The outbreak, this, it's just pathetic. It's gotta stop. These should be civil conversations between adults, not acting like children. But as far as the meeting last week, I know Mr. Wallace brought up the whole thing with him going through the school, and he's in agreeance about background checks. Does the board, do they have to have background checks to be on the board? I think that should be implemented. Mr. Wallace said he helped at a popcorn thing at school and the Christmas dinner. As a parent, I have to run through a background check to go on a field trip with my son. Why don't the board have to do that? Especially if they're going through the school. It, it doesn't hurt.
Yeah, those are, just to be clear, those were volunteers. I was not as a board, I was as a parent.
Understandably.
But I agree.
But do you have a background check?
No, no, I agree with you.
Okay, so that's my point. You're a parent, and you had to volunteer, so you should have a background check. And Mr. Seibert, you brought up a good point as far as following someone through the school. With our kids' athletics, there is a rule, you have to have two coaches. It is always good to have multiple people there. Mr. Wallace, you could have saw something and told the rest of the board that you saw something. Well, it's just hearsay. If someone else is there with you and sees that, you got two people to back you up. As far as the bus driver shortage, Mr. Wallace, it's, it's, it's all businesses, all companies. There's shortage of employees. I know you said something about having parent or coaches. There's a shortage of coaches. I mean, just the athletics outside of Little Miami, they can't find parents to coach. Parents don't even show up to practice. They drop their kids off and go off. It's a babysitter. It, it's just gonna be tough. You guys are just gonna have to work together like adults and figure out a way. Ask questions. There is no dumb question. Thank you.
Thanks.
There is none?
We'll leave it at that one.
All right, again, our next meeting is what did I say?
October 28th.
October 28th.
But we have a special meeting on the 6th.
We have a special meeting on the 6th, isn't that right?
What time is that?
Five, isn't it five?
Should be five.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Wallace?
Elmer? Clock on the 6th.
Roll call?
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you.